January 2021, meeting of the Penfield Public Library Board of Trustees. I'm Barbara Power. I'm the president this year. Before we do anything else, I'd like to formally, for the minutes, acknowledge and thank the three trustees who left us at the end of last year for their service: Christopher Fluid, Amy Guafretta, and Mary McVickerkeem. We really were grateful to have them as colleagues on the board, and we wish them well. We have three new members, two of whom are with us right now. We have Brett Holly, and we have Jennifer McCrory. And then Judy Carpenter, as I said, has just emailed me, and she is going to be joining in a couple seconds. So I would like to say welcome to the three of you. And could you give us a brief summary of why you wanted to be on the library board? Because not everybody got a chance to talk to you during the application process. And then we'll go around, and the rest of us will introduce ourselves and say something about us, so you'll know kind of who you're interacting with. It's a lot easier in person, but we'll do the best we can to welcome you on Zoom. So Brett, we'll go in alphabetical order, and you will be first.
Hi, Brett Holly here. Thank you guys for having me join the board. I really wanted to join the board and be a part of the community. It's always been a desire for my family to just to give back to the community that's given us so much with us having a small family who does actively homeschool our children. We wanted to give a different perspective to the board and try to find ways in which we can use our experiences to help the community at a large.
Very good. Jennifer?
Hi, I'm Jennifer McCrory. My family also, like Brett said, likes to give back to the community. We've been living in Penfield for 10 years, and the library has been a central part of our lives. I have two teenage daughters, and ever since they were real young, we've always been involved in the library programs. I am currently actually in library school right now at St. John Fisher. And through my program, I have learned so much about advocacy and all that is needed in order to help libraries to run. And so I thought that maybe I could bring some of those skills to our group to help to make our library an even more vibrant part of our community where needed.
Thank you. We're going to go around, and I don't know how you all are seeing everyone. But Bunny, why don't we start with you? You can just give us a couple of, you know, about 30 seconds of who you are and how long you've been with the library, in case they don't know you. But you have to turn up there.
I'm Bernadette Brinkman. I am the director of the library. And I've been here, I think I just finished 11 years. I'm going into my 12th year.
Very good. Megan?
All right, unmute myself. My name is Megan Griffin Adams. I have been on the library board for a year now. I just started last year. Very similar to our two new trustees. I also was very involved in the library through some of their children's programming. And I also work in the senior care industry. And I also volunteer as a troop leader with the Girl Scouts. So I'm kind of very interested in seeing how, you know, from our youngest to our oldest, you know, how we as the library can help support the community.
And Melissa?
Hello, I'm Melissa Bowie. I've been on the library board for, I think this is my sixth year now. I have two children, two girls, in elementary school, and we're big users of the library. So I wanted to join and figure out how I could share my skills and help with the library. I currently stay home. I'm a stay-at-home mom, but I was in marketing and design previously.
Very good. How about you, Rachel?
I'm Rachel O'Neil. This is my fourth year on the library board. I have three elementary-age kids, so we're doing the whole hybrid learning experience. And I teach online as well. But we've been active users of the library and wanted to give back, just like all the other members.
And Gail? I know you're not a member of the board, but you're a very important person to us.
Thank you. I'm Gail McKay. I'm the secretary to the director, Bernadette Brinkman. And also in my capacity working at the library, I'm the assistant board secretary as well. I've been working for the library for 27 years.
Wow.
And Niraj?
Hi, my name is Niraj Shah. I think I've been with the board for five years. I actually worked at the library as a high school, in high school. So I was used to working there, and some of the staff I used to report to that are still currently working at the library. Right now, I'm an attorney and a CPA for local business here in Penfield. And I enjoy coming back to the board at the library and the community.
And Denise?
Hi, everyone. I'm Denise O'Reilly. I'm a newer board member as well. I joined the same time as Megan, so I've just completed my first full year. I'm a stay-at-home mom, and I have two younger kids, one and three. So we're familiar with a lot of children's programs and storytimes, and we take advantage of those. So same as all the other board members, just wanted to give back. And of course, we're another family that loves the library, just like the rest of you.
And I'm Barbara Power. I'm the president. I've been on for four years. Rachel and I came on at the same year, or I'm starting my fourth year. And I have grown children and grandchildren. And my children were here in Penfield, but now they're living elsewhere. And I have always been a big reader and writer and fan of the library. So I'm really happy to be able to be involved and give back to the community. Right now, let's move on to the approval of the minutes. Did everyone have a chance to look those over? Were there any changes, or do we have a motion for approval? Rachel, thank you. Rachel has moved. Is there a second? Thanks, Niraj. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, it looks unanimous. Usually we have public participation, or an opportunity for public participation if we are in a regular meeting situation. We do not have that here. What we do have is an email for the trustees. It is PPLTrustees@yahoo.com. So if any of you are watching and you want to make a comment, or if you have a question, please feel free to write us at PPLTrustees@yahoo.com. And before we move on, Judy Marinucci has just joined us. So if you would like to, oops, she was there.
I don't know where my picture went, sorry.
That's okay. We've seen her a minute. We've been going around and introducing ourselves and saying a little about ourselves. So if you would like to just take like 30 seconds and introduce yourself to the other board members, that would be great.
Okay. I apologize for not being here on time. I don't know, I seem to have misplaced that Zoom registration form. Anyhow, I've been a member of Penfield for about 10 years. My past experience has been in education. And I am retired and have lots of interests, one of which is a burning desire to read and learn. So that's about me.
Very good.
Me, right? Where is, I don't know what happened here. I've never had those.
We're not going, you'll find it again.
I will, sorry.
I'm going to take, I was going to do the financial report when we did the committees, but I think it would be helpful to do the financial report now. Niraj, would you like to share your reports and your?
Yeah, sure. I'm just going to go over some of the financial reports. If we can go over some of the attachments that you've been given. I'll start where it says, the heading, it says monthly balance sheet for Penfield Public Library. This snapshot is really meant to see how we're coming in on a revenues, expenditures kind of basis, just to make sure that we're doing good monthly. And it kind of hits the big dollar amounts. Right now, it's showing that we had positive $58,109. That's important to know. That's showing that we had more revenues coming in than expenditures, which is nice. Gift and memorial fund, there's a threshold that we need to be over. That's $140,000. Right now, we're at $166,000, and it's largely unchanged from last month. If I go to the next page that I'd like to go to, is the fines and copiers. Again, these are very small dollar amounts, even though it's a separate attachment. I think we need to put perspective. So if you look at the previous page, you kind of see where the fines, copier numbers are. This is a very small amount of our revenue. Even so, it was 50% less than the same quarter of 2019. And that's largely because of policy changes. And it's not really significant dollars, so I don't see that as a big deal. I'd like to flip right now to looking at what's called the end of 2020 monthly budget summary. This is a good line-by-line presentation of the revenues and the expenses or expenditures through the whole year 2020. We get this on a monthly basis, so we get to see how we're going month by month. But this is, in total, how did we do? In revenue, we came in $84,000 worse than budget. That budget, the reason why it was worse than budget was we had a $50,000 budget surplus in our budget that, of course, we didn't have in actual. And then fines, there was $23,000 fine that, of course, we didn't pick up because of the policy changes. In expenditures, we came in $116,000 better than budget, so that was good. So if you look at expenditures compared to revenues, we came out better. So this was a good year. $51,000 we saved on wages. That was in certified staff. $31,000 we saved on materials, or we spent less, and $14,000 in benefits. So all in all, it was a good year. The next page really isn't all that informative other than it's just listing our budget for January 2021. We'll see how we did next meeting. The other thing that I wanted to point out this month was, of course, you see where we are with our assets, our cash balances. Family First, Credit Union, and Canadago, we have $166,000. On an email, I kind of listed it because I wanted to understand it better. Money Market, we have $24,000. The rest are in CDs. So that's a good thing to know, because one of our CDs is coming to mature in March. So I'd like some guidance if we can. I've already done some homework for us. I think it's important, right now, there's not a big change in any duration CD. So there's not much of a downside in keeping it in money market. Brett can speak to it. He's in the industry. But I don't see much downside in even keeping it in money market. Money market is giving us .1. We're not gaining much by locking it in to .4, .5. Right now, I think that the interest rates are going to go higher. And if we have it in liquid, there's two benefits. I mean, we have it for an emergency fund. Plus, we can hit, as interest rates go higher, we can probably get a better rate. But if we do choose to renew, my thoughts are maybe move $20,000 of that $45,000 that's maturing to a more liquid position in the money market and earn .1%. And if we still want to do some CD, then we can put the balance, the remaining $20,000 or whatever, into the special 15-month CD that I went to Family First today to kind of get the rates. That's earning .5. This would stagger our CDs, which is always beneficial. But that's just my thoughts. And that's pretty much it this month.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Hi. Just a comment to make. I think Niraj is right. Rates are at historic lows right now. They probably will go up over the next year or two. If we're looking to keep that money liquid, I don't know if we're required to keep that money at Family First. But you do know some of the online banks do offer higher interest rates on their money markets. We could probably get a half a percent there, which is probably equivalent to some of the CDs that we're looking to potentially purchase through Family First. I can do some more research and send it out to everyone.
One of the reasons we have accounts with Family First is that they're a local organization.
Okay.
And, you know, we try to support our local businesses with what we do. And I don't know that a half a percent is going to make a whole lot of difference. I mean, if it were like 4% or 5%, yes, I would think so. I had a question. We were talking about the, how we saved on expenditures and personnel. Is that because of COVID?
I'm not sure, but that's what the numbers showed.
I just wondered if we could expect a similar savings again next year? Bunny, can you speak to that?
I'm interpreting that a little bit differently from Niraj. I don't think we really saved that. We were able to get through without having to move the money from the step increases into a payment line, but... Oh yeah, I guess you're right, Niraj. Now that I'm looking, I guess you can look at that as a savings. We didn't expend that. A lot of it was, when we were closed, of course, we weren't using the number of subs that we usually have. We weren't scheduling pages for a lot of that time. We only had what we considered were essential staff to keep operations going so that we could hit the ground running when we opened again. So I was shocked to see that it amounted to that much. But yeah, we probably did reserve back that much, and it was attributable to COVID.
Okay. But it's good to save money. If we couldn't be open and providing service, it's good to at least have the money there. Is there a motion to accept the financial reports? Niraj, do you want more discussion?
No, I don't want more discussion.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the financial reports? Thank you, Megan. Denise, do you want a second? Yes, okay.
Barbara?
Yes?
Could we, do you want to make a decision on what I need to do with the, or what I have the authority to do with the CD? Do you want to discuss that, or do you want to do that in February?
I'd like to do that in February and let Judy and Brett and Jennifer kind of think about what's been said tonight and how we're going to do it. Because I think...
Good. So I think...
All of a sudden, it's a lot of things, and all of a sudden, people are saying, oh, what do you think about that? And it's like, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
We can do it next month.
Thank you.
Look over the materials that Niraj did a wonderful job preparing, and that would be helpful. I just, I wanted to take a couple minutes and talk about the plans for the year. This, I think we're kind of, we're at an interesting point. We have a lot of new people on our board, and I think that's always exciting. And it means that we could, you know, it means change and new ideas, and I think that's always a wonderful thing. I have a couple of goals for the year. And my first goal is that we all function together well. Bunny and Gail and the board, and we all kind of come together, and we are a team, and we get things done. And what we get done is I sent around the link to the new regulations. And I know it looks kind of staid and maybe not the most interesting thing in the world, but there are 14 regulations. We cannot address each one of them this year. But I thought if we could pick five or six, and I have some that I think we really need to do. And I was hoping that you all might have suggestions on what you thought the board might want to look at. Did people have a chance to look at these, or at least to become familiar with what they are? Oh, good. Well, the first one I think we really should tackle is the strategic plan or long-range plan. And we had a group that was looking at that before. And with the pandemic and all the changes that have come around, we're in a very different place. I don't know that it's better or worse, but it's different. And I think the first thing we're going to need to do is to find ways of reaching out to as many members of the community as possible to find out what they're interested in with the library. But that would be, that's, I'm open to hear what everybody else has to say about those topics.
I thought that was definitely something we should focus on, too, when I was looking at the standards, the link that you sent out. I think the long-range plan is important. And revisiting our strategic plan would be a good idea right now, just given all the changes that have happened this year.
Did anybody else have any thoughts?
One that I thought would be important to address would be to evaluate the effectiveness of the library's programs is number six. I noticed in some of the paperwork that you sent out, there's a big difference between the children. I know that we're in COVID, so things are a little bit different in this environment. But I noticed there's a big difference between the participation in children's programs and in the teen programs. And I was just wondering if maybe there was something to address in there and maybe do some evaluation of the teen programming and seeing if there's somewhere to go with that. I did notice when I went on the Help, the New York State website that you sent the link to, Barb, it gave some ideas, and it said to maybe start in one or two areas if you're going to be evaluating your program. So that's what brought that to my attention, thinking about the difference in the number of participants, I guess. What happens between the children's, kids in the children's room, and then when they get to the teens? Like, what can we do to bridge that gap?
I think that's an excellent thing to look at. And I don't know how much of that is COVID-related. I know when the students were in high school in previous years, if I were, if I came to the library on a day off and was there around 3:00 in the afternoon, there were lots of teenagers hanging out. Now, since they're partly at home and partly in school, and their hours are different, I don't know if that's having an impact, but I think that's definitely something to address. And thank you for picking that one, because that was also one that I had checked as something to do, to look at this year. Did anybody else have any thoughts?
I kind of liked, so number 14, which is establishes and maintains partnership with other educational, cultural, or community organizations, which enable the library to address the community's needs as outlined in the library's long-range plan of service. And I think especially if one of the things that we're looking at is looking at that long-range plan of service. But I'd really love to take a look at how, you know, we could collaborate with other community organizations. Again, you know, from my own personal experience, I'm a Girl Scout troop leader. And there are a lot of different Girl Scout activities, badges, things like that, that I think could easily be done in collaboration with the library. You know, similarly for, you know, programming for seniors and looking at other groups. And it seems like if we're already looking at the long-range plan, then that assessment of how can we partner then with other organizations, I think those would really go hand in hand very nicely.
Yes, and you get a good gold star, just like Jennifer, because you each picked things that I had already checked off on my list. Does anybody else have a suggestion of something we might want to look at this year?
I liked that establishing a partnership, one that was just said, that was just mentioned. Maybe that can also, not just nonprofits or other organizations, it could also maybe reinforce a better relationship and a, kind of, just to support the school libraries and the school, like have more relationship with them. So just kind of tap into the students that are here.
Okay.
I just wanted to add something to that. Ordinarily, we do have a very good relationship with the librarians in the Penfield Central School District. We haven't been able to maintain that as well because of COVID this year. But I hope that has, and I can't imagine that that's deteriorated any, and will certainly be, when we're past COVID time, we'll be picking that right up again and having our regular meetings with them.
Great. That's good to know, Bunny. Thank you. I had picked out a couple others, and one was the report to the community that I know that Bunny and her staff have done. But I think that that's really, it should be more of a joint effort since it's been put in the trustee column, and that we couldn't do it without Bunny and her staff. But I think that how we do that and what we do with it. And I assume that sometime during this year, we will be able to meet with people again in person. I don't know if it will be in June. I don't know if it will be in September. But I think that sometime we will be able to do that. And I think if we have a report of how we have done from one fiscal year to the next, and we have information to share, we could offer to go out and present at different community organizations and talk about our usage, and again, try to get a feel for what people are looking for from the library. And the other one I had was a facility to meet community needs. Now, that does not mean a new library. That means what could we do? What, how are we, what are we, what's the physical setup like? Is there something that's needed? How can we do that within our space? Because right now, New York State is not in a position to build additions, new facilities, or anything. So we just, we have to accept reality and be a little creative. And we don't have to answer any of these tonight. So if, and if you have other suggestions, please feel free to give them to me because I am one person, and I have ideas. I don't, and I don't have all the good ideas, but I really recognize when other people come up with good ideas. And I think that that's important, that we all talk and share.
I think Barbara, going along with including Girl Scout troops or having...
including Girl Scout troops or having other neighbor, other community groups involved, number nine also goes exactly with what you said about providing community needs. So I supported that one, which I think goes very nicely with fourteen. And what else? We talked about another one that I thought number eight, that, you know, maintains that community needs that way.
Very good. Yes, I do think a lot of these overlap and a lot of them are tweaks to regulations that have been in place. This is, none of these are brand new, but they are, but they are more aspirational goals that during the next three years, this is the level of service that we will come up to with our library in our community.
Barbara, I had a, a comment too. And I think it was the end of 2019. The Strategic Planning Committee got together and we were putting together a plan to reach out to the commit, the community to gauge, you know, what the community is interested in, where we could add services or, you know, what they're looking for in their library. And we were going to, I think Niraj or Rachel can comment on this too, but we were going to put a survey out to the community, the beginning of last year, and then after COVID had, it got put on hold. Is that, do we think now would be a good time to revisit that, or should we still wait a little bit?
I think it's a good time. I think what we might want to do is to think about how we want to do it. For example, Brett, who was one of our new members, is involved with homeschooling and I understand there are maybe five to 10% of the children in Penfield are homeschooled. Is that a fair assessment? Is it that high?
I think that's about accurate, yeah.
Well, that's an audience that we were not able to reach before. And so we would kind of look to you and say, can you help us do this? Can you help us reach out to these families and see what their needs are with our survey? And I think we should find different ways to, to reach out to groups that we might not have thought about before.
I know that when we were researching, doing this survey, we had been in contact with PennRec and they had an email list that they were willing to provide as well, so we could disseminate to that area of the community.
And I think we had, didn't we have the Survey Monkey ready to go as well?
I believe so.
We probably want to look at that again.
I think the questions may need to be changed or tweaked.
Probably tweaked instead of just, instead of changed, but I think it would be good to do that. I think that's great about the Rec Center. The other thing that you all know we're going to talk about in a few minutes is the website. And we could have something on the website and ask people to fill that out and send it in. I mean, if we had a Survey Monkey, that would be a great place to, to put that and then get the responses back. So I think there are lots of places. I think we need a special, a separate meeting to talk about that. But I think that that is, I think those are really good ideas and I do think this is the time, maybe not January, but by March, I think it would be time to get the survey out and the weather's going to be warming up and people are going to be thinking a little more. Right now, I think people are still hunkered down. And if they're worried about anything, it's whether or not the bills are going to win. So, but I think those are good ideas and maybe for our next meeting, do you have a copy of the survey, Rachel or Melissa?
I think one of us has a copy somewhere, so.
If you could email that to me, then I'll send it out with the agenda and then we could share that and everybody can look at it. And then anyone can say, oh, I think we ought to ask this or we ought to ask that. Because this is our, this is going to be our big chance to, to learn about our audience or our, our community and what they're, what they're hoping that we do for them. We have Aaliyah's on to the town board, who is usually with us. Her name is Linda Cole and she's one of the town board members. And Linda is not able to be with us tonight, but I understand she gave Bunny a report. So Bunny, would you like to share what Linda has, has sent in?
Yeah, she says that her report for this evening was to simply welcome the new board members. And the town board continues to meet on Zoom and will soon be meeting with departments regarding their goals and priorities for 2021.
Okay. Short and sweet. And on the agenda is the list of committee assignments. I hope that you all have received at least one assignment that you're happy with. And I appreciate everyone who's chairing a committee because that is not always an easy thing to do. Some of the committees like finance, Niraj has, has just kind of jumped right in there and he has really, certainly he's taken, he took over from me. And I will tell you, I was not as proactive as Niraj is, and I think it's great. And I think the board will only benefit from that. So thank you for doing that. Rachel is in charge of personnel and Judy and Denise are on that. Strategic planning, even though we might do more strategic planning discussion as a group, Melissa and your committee will work on pulling everything together and then giving us something to review. So it'll be almost a two-tiered kind of approach. Bylaws and policy. Megan, you're going to be probably first up. I was talking with Bunny this afternoon. We are going to be looking at our cash handling policy as it affects donations. And we're going to have a meeting with Bunny and Barbara Chirdo from the town and Dick Horowitz, the town attorney, myself and Kathy Weber from the foundation to discuss how we're going to streamline and make and clarify our donation policy. And when we do, Denise, your committee is going to need to come up with a plan for how we're going to communicate with donors. So I think in some ways we all have different things to do. And Jennifer, I put you on that committee because I know that you, one of the things about advocacy is it involves writing and communications. And I know that advocacy is your, your interest. And so I was hoping that that would be something where we could do letter writing and we could all, people could learn from you and you could be part of the group that's doing the thank yous.
Sounds good.
And now Bunny is going to take us through the director's report. And then she's going to give us a, a presentation on the organization of the library.
Okay, you all got a copy of my director's report? Were there any questions or comments on that?
There's a lot in it, Bunny.
What does TLC, what does TLC stand for?
The Library Corporation. It's the company that owns the integrated library system that we use. The, the release that we use is called carol.x.
Will they own Carl?
They own it.
Okay.
And one of the things we're going to do starting next month is that Bunny is going to pick a librarian from one of the areas who will come in and make a presentation on his or her area. It might be children's, it might be young adult, it might be an adult librarian, it might be technology. But they are going to talk about how they make their decisions, why they buy when we sign those vouchers. What does that mean to the library, the library staff? When they're ordering things, how do they do it? How do they know? You know, there are all kinds of questions and I think it would be helpful for us to hear from them. And I think, on the other hand, it would be helpful for them to see that we are actually working to improve the library. So I don't know who's going to be first up, but that is, the rotation of that is up to Bunny.
And I think it's a great idea. I, I think things are always changing. I, I think everybody could benefit from getting a little education of our own library and we'll probably learn some, we'll learn a lot of things. I'm really excited for that part.
Oh, good, good. Well, I think Bunny's excited for it. I was in the library last Friday and one of the librarians came up to me and said, I'm excited about this. So I thought, wow, that is, that is great. So I'm, I'm pleased we're doing that. If there are no questions, do you want to start your presentation? You're muted, Bunny.
I practiced before sharing. Let, let me permanently unmute so I don't have to touch the spacebar. I'll be right back. Okay, now I'm permanently unmuted. Now I'm going to try to share the screen with you.
You're brave.
Okay, and there it is. Is everybody, everybody seeing that? Okay. Let me see if I can expand the view of this a little bit because I had to put it on a, a big piece of paper, if you can imagine that that's, it's actually on a, okay, let me, come on. There we go. Let me make this a little bigger.
If you go to the upper left, you can make it 200% there.
Yeah, I did already. Okay. Let me just scooch it over here so it's in your view. Okay. So we start with my position right at the top of the screen and the lines leading down from that will tell you what my direct reports are. The first person you see on that is our principal library clerk, who is Sarah Terry. I tried to label this with who did what and, and what their, what their tasks, main tasks were. She is the circulation supervisor.
Can you, can you increase the font size a little bit more?
Uh, yeah, sure.
Thanks.
I'll, I'll try here. Let's get it up into view. Okay. And let's try. Let's try that. Is that a little bit better for everybody?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So the, as I said, the first person on the direct report is Sarah Terry, who is the circulation supervisor. And I insist that everybody who work in the library do some work that compels them to interact with the public during the day. So all of our clerks have to do a shift on the circulation desk, even though their main job is to serve as the processor for the librarian in charge of developing a corresponding collection. So in Sarah's case, she processes the adult nonfiction. She supervises, I'm going to sneak my cursor over here. She supervises all the clerks. So we have three senior library clerks and a, a library clerk, she's newer, so she hasn't reached the senior level yet. And the first person that Sarah supervises in coordination with the librarian that the, the clerks work in conjunction with is Liz Corella. She processes all the, can I say she does all the nonprint? Yes, I think I can say now she does all the nonprint. So she does all the video formats, all the recording formats and the video games. Another senior library clerk that we have is Marion Spencer. And she processes, keeping in mind each of these people has a, a circulation desk shift every day. She processes young adult fiction and nonfiction, the periodicals, the large print. She also handles interlibrary loan for us. We do occasionally go out to libraries outside the Monroe County Library System and pull materials in for patrons. Nonfiction materials, that is, books. And Marion handles that. She also does, is our outreach person. And every month she visits eight senior living facilities here in Penfield. And she takes collections to them. She will take requests from them for the materials she takes, mostly large print materials. And she collects then when she makes her monthly visit, whatever she has left on her previous visit and brings that back to the library and returns those. The next senior library clerk is Kathleen Wakefield and she processes, I have large print there. They recently switched that. So she actually processes adult fiction, which is a huge job. And then the last, but not least, library clerk is, let me just see if I can move it down slightly. Yep. Is Laura Jacoby and she does, which, another huge job, the children's fiction and nonfiction. Now Sarah also supervises four desk library aides. I didn't list them, I think we've got it, we've got a fifth one now. When I did that, we had four. Five desk library aides that work part-time and strictly work on the circulation desk. So there's more work to be done in circulation than just the, working at the desk. There are lots of behind the scenes things to do. We have a book drop that needs to be. Right now, we're putting those materials in quarantine, but when they come out of quarantine, those need to be processed and either put back on our shelves or put in delivery to return to other libraries. We have delivery every day, so we're processing materials back into our collection that come back to us having been returned at other libraries. They, we get a lot of reports from our integrated library system, things to, to look at on our shelves, things that patrons think they've returned and we're just checking on those. They, for whatever reason, didn't get taken off their card, whether it's that they still have the materials or we actually somehow missed them in circulation. So we have to pursue looking at those. We have people with delinquent accounts that we have to communicate with and reconcile their accounts. Oh, there are lots of, lots of reports, things that go missing from our shelves. And when we do an inventory, we can't explain where they are. They're not accounted for by circulation. So we have reports of those materials that the, the desk aides search for and help with. Lots of reports like that circulation report. So there's plenty of, of work for the library aides to do when they're not actually helping the public at the circulation desk. And then the last person is our only full-time library aide, and that is Miriam Arnold. Miriam Arnold's primary duty, she doesn't work on a collection. Her primary duties are being in charge of our communications. So she develops our website. She's responsible for the look of the library. So she designs all the signage. She designs the, the big displays in the library. And she is working, of course, with, as her bible, our branding document that was generated for us when we developed our new logo. So everything has a consistent look that comes from the library. As we go down the, the chart a little bit, now we're getting back to people who directly report to me. And one of them is Gail McKay. The, another one is our network administrator, Mike Barudi. And it's a very important job in the library. The library is so intense with technology nowadays that we really need a, a network, a knowledgeable network level administrator on hand to assist us with all the, the technology that we are not only using to conduct our everyday library business, but we're offering to the public too, things like wireless access and access to our, our computers where, where they can then go out to the internet and access some office applications. and access some office applications that we have on our public computers. I'm also in charge of all the librarians. So uh, the first one on the chart is Judy Carpenter, who is a librarian too and is a children's librarian. She is in charge of the children's fiction collection. Um, the next one on our list is Kim Catalinello, who is in, she's a librarian too and is in charge of adult fiction and large print, developing that collection. The next one on the chart is Candace Johnson, who is a librarian too and is in charge of adult, I have adult fiction. Should say adult nonfiction. Um, she develops the audio book collection and the electronic book collection. Um, electronic books and audiobooks, e-audiobooks, that, that's meant to say. Um, another librarian too uh, that I'm in charge of is Peggy O'Neil, who is in charge of our periodicals. She oversees disability and handicapped access services for us. And she's our volunteer coordinator. She's uh, a, a really ace reference librarian and takes on a good share of, of the reference service we provide every day. Uh, the next librarian too on the list is Todd Randall. And he is actually in charge of reference. Um, the reference collection, although it's smaller than it used to be, um, our reference collection now encompasses a lot of electronic materials that have eclipsed the relevancy of the print materials that we used to have. So we no longer have to have the huge print uh, collection that we had to provide uh, up-to-date reference service. He's also in charge of developing the video collection, the music and the music recording collection. And he uh, evaluates and uh, promotes our, the technology resources that we offer. So our elect, what we call the electronic resources, our databases and that kind of thing. Then we have another librarian, she just started with us, Julie Rapp, who is in charge of children's nonfiction. She supervises our two library assistants, Tracy Drake and Katie Mulvey, who provide immediate reference service in the children's room. Um, and are in charge of our Thousand Books Before Kindergarten. Um, and, and some other programs that we have in the children's room. They also assist with children's programming. And then we have a couple of library aides. Uh, Julie supervises them. Uh, right now we happen to have two very good ones. Um, Danny Galens and Emily Goosen. And they assist actually all the librarians, but primarily they're assisting the children's librarians because of the enormous number of programs that we have for children's and the amount of preparation that's necessary for those programs. They're, they're invaluable in helping the librarians and library assistants get those programs on. And then our last librarian is another librarian too. She is in charge of young adult fiction and nonfiction and uh, oversees the development of the video game collection, and that's Lila Grills. And she supervises the library pages. Right now we have eight active library pages. We always have a few that we can call back to fill in, kind of in a sub um, categorization to um, help us out with uh, any seasonal needs we have. So if they come back from college on vacation at Christmas time saying, we're down a few pages because of the holiday, they can come in and fill in and, and keep us going with the library housekeeping duties that they perform. That pretty much is the library staff.
How many people altogether?
Uh, just about 50 if you count all our subs.
All the subs and the pages and...
Subs and pages. Um, we have subs for librarians and we have subs for the circulation desk too. Uh, so we have quite a, a, a backstop of them to help us out when we were feeling a little bit of a pinch from a lot of absences due to um, vacations. We hope it's for something good and not for, not for illness, for vacations. Um, we have about 20, I don't, I don't know what the latest calculation is. Uh, Gail's working on the figures right now for the state report, but I think it was something like 23.5 full-time equivalents uh, in last year's state report.
Well, who backstops you Bunny? If you get sick.
Um, there is a succession plan. I, it was Jennifer Cackeval until she left us to become the head of Brockport. And it's, Todd Randall can step in temporarily if it's, if it's a prolonged absence. Um, and you need to fill it in with, with somebody temporarily. Um, he just holds the fort long enough for the board to move in and appoint somebody temporarily to, um, somebody from outside to come in and, and fill in.
That doesn't happen.
On a, on a day-to-day basis, whoever, we ha, always have a librarian at the information desk. And that librarian is considered the librarian in charge. So if I'm out of the building and we need a deci, an executive decision by somebody, everybody is instructed to turn to the librarian in charge. And that is whoever is assigned for that shift at the information desk.
Wow.
That's quite a process.
Yes, it is.
Bunny, um, what, what do we do, or how do you, how do you do the um, oh, let me see, I just saw it and I forgot what it was. Um, the librarian that is responsible for our senior um, and our handicapped disability services, who's Peggy O'Neil.
It is.
But what kind of services do we provide for them?
She provides, uh, she makes sure that we have equipment and services on hand. For example, um, adapta, adaptations for our computers to make sure that they're accessible to the handicapped. She makes sure that we have uh, devices for them to navigate the library, like our scooter and our uh, rollers. Um, she provides the liaison to the New York State Library Services for the blind and handicapped and also to the Library of Congress analogous service for that. She can hook people up for those services. Um, she was the one, she's, was the one responsible for getting us our Onyx device, um, that, the text magnifier that people can come in and use. Um, but things, things like that. Our, our uh, audio adaptive device in the Bremen Room, she oversees that.
Oh, interesting, I mean, that's quite a, quite a job.
Yes, it's an important job.
It certainly is.
Well, I think they're all important jobs that they have.
Oh, I'd agree.
That is, that is so helpful Bunny. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
It really helps us. I, one thing I think that would be nice is if they wore their name badges because I know some people by sight and I don't, but I don't know their names. And at this point, I feel like I should. And I'm embarrassed to say, I know you know who I am, but I don't know who you are.
I know I've talked about this before in the board meeting. I had a very unfortunate experience. Uh, we wore name badges when I worked at Rochester Public Library. I was not the only one. I was stalked by somebody and several other librarians were. Um, I'm a little gun shy about insisting. They, they may wear their names if they would like to. I'm a little gun shy about insisting about that for them just from having had that unfortunate experience. Um, but I can ask them if they, if they don't mind, if they wouldn't mind. I would never wear my name out on the floor again. Um, but they're, they're welcome to do that if they want to. We do have Gail designed some very nice badges for us that do at least say, identify what we do, what area we work in. So people can see, oh, that's, that's a librarian, she works here, I can ask her a question. We do have, we do wear badges like that.
I think that would be, that's a good thing because sometimes you don't know who's a librarian and who isn't.
Right.
It's like going into a store and seeing somebody putting something back on their shelf and saying, oh, can you help me? And they say, well, I don't work here. I mean, you, you, there's always that chance for making a mistake and...
And, and I think it's important uh, for like little kids. If, if they jump out of the children's area and they can't find their parents or something, who do I, um, who am I able to go to or something like that? Like if they, if there's a stranger, you don't want to tell them, just ask any adult. Like it's...
Exactly.
Whenever I go to Disney, Disney does a great thing. I mean, everyone has a badge and all that stuff. So you can let them know, hey, if, if someone has this badge, you're okay to um, talk with them. But I think it's good for safety.
I think so too, and they could be called helpers. They don't have to know their names, but you know, like Mr. Rogers. Look for the helpers and you know, the kids could know that if somebody has that on, they're going to be okay.
Yes.
And I think identifying them, at least if somebody was identified, now I do know Peggy O'Neil, but if somebody just said um, disability services volunteer coordinator, I would be able to come back and look at my chart and say, aha, that is Peggy O'Neil. So the next time I go in there, I would be able to say, oh, hi Peggy, how are you? So it's just, it's just a way for us, I think, to feel comfortable in, in actually knowing the staff and for them to feel like they are recognized as individuals. Um, but anyhow, thank you. I really appreciate your taking the time and putting that together for us. Um, did you all have a chance to look at the beta website?
Yep.
No, Niraj and Judy sent me comments. And if we all want to just kind of make some general comments, I have some also. Big surprise for anybody who knows me. Um, I, um, what I thought would be helpful to the town staff would be for me to put all of our comments together and share them with Bunny and share them with the um, with Dave Renner, who's doing the um, website. So everybody knows what is being said. Um, I will just make one general observation, and that is, I think it looks really wonderful.
Yeah, I think it's a great job.
I think it's a really good start.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Miriam Arnold. We're lucky to have her on staff.
Is she the person who's taking the design and actually plugging everything in?
Yeah, she's, she really, we were given kind of a template from the, the town, but she really um, organized the content and assembled the content for us.
I did see that there was a huge gap, however. There's nothing about the trustees except a list of meeting minutes a year. And um, so we're going to have to work on that. And I know Gail is collecting photos. And um, that will be something um, Miriam gets to do to put all of our photos up there with um, our names. So people in the community know where we are, but who we are. But I think I'd like, I'd like to say something and maybe I'll just write it if, if that's not going to step on anybody's toes and just say...
Yeah, definitely. A lot of the stuff we put there is just kind of a placeholder until it becomes live and we can get the input of the people who should properly give us the information for that. So, yep.
So we'll do that. And if I do something...
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, I thought the, I thought the website is off to a great start. And I do have a list for um, that I can email you Barbara, just of things that I noted. Um, one of the biggest things that I was curious if um, the town or Miriam could work on um, was the calendar, the list of events. Um, the way it's set up right now, I think it was like 10 pages long and it was just a running list of all of the events. And I know a lot of other libraries have a, a visual calendar where the events are plugged into the date, so it's easier to find things.
Yeah, we, we actually have that. We have that on our current website. That, that will be in the new one. But at this point in, in the development of it, we weren't putting links to outside companies that provide that. We get that from, it's not advanced anymore, it's going out of my head. It's a spring share product, Libcal. Um, and we weren't, we weren't able to put those, the widgets or whatever they are to, to link to things like that or to show that. So yes, that's already in the works. We have one of those and it'll show eventually.
One thing that I noticed, um, I, I, I noticed a lot of the great things that you have all said about, um, I love the way it, it's less wordy than the current website. So when you're going to look for what you need to do, you can look for a, a tab or a button to click on instead of reading through to figure out where to go to find that information. I thought that's really helpful because everyone's in such a hurry now when they're going to websites to figure out where they need to go. They don't have time to, to do, to look that closely or to read that for closely and everything. But one thing that I noticed was there are a lot of repetitions. So there are many different places that you can click to get to things. So it's not as efficient as um, as it could be. So I was just thinking that maybe it's a task that um, to, in the future, maybe to, to create a site map for it and figure out all the things you need to have. And um, and where exactly would be the most intuitive way to organize it so that it's easy for people to find what they need to find.
I, I find that frustrating too, Jennifer. And I understand from Miriam, that sort of redundancy that you build in is sort of a rule that you're supposed to have in web design. Um, but maybe we have overdone that. I, I don't know, because my sense was, I didn't like to have that much choice and I'm having it be repeated from page to page. But um, I guess other people find that helpful. So yeah, definitely if you're noticing anything like that, bring it forward and we'll take a look at it.
So Jennifer, would you like to send me an email with, with those comments? And if you have another one, I'm sorry I interrupted you.
Oh, no, I was going to say that um, Niraj had uh, sent out that email to us. And something that I loved about in, in that email that I also noticed, I didn't read your email until after I searched myself and I thought so many connections between what I thought and what, what you had thought. But um, one of the things was a, um, I can't remember what you called it. Um, plan your visit section where you would put on all of that, a lot of that information because a lot of the sep, was um, like maybe hours and directions, things like that were in separate tabs where a one place that was plan your visit might be having like the COVID regulations and stuff like that would be helpful, I think, to make it you, um, more user-friendly so that people can, don't have to search around so much for what they're looking for.
And the hours could go in there too. Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think um, one thing especially right now, when some people um, didn't even know, it's like some people don't know that you can go into the library if you talk in the community and all that stuff. Um, even as us as trustees, um, I doubt that all of us know exactly what the hours are when it opens and closes, because it's changed over the times. And um, it's frustrating because I, well, I have an average of 100 or 110 books out at any one given time. So I'm returning books all the time at the book drop, like pretty much like four times a week. And there's many times that I go to just return the drop and I see other patrons that come and they see the door locked. So, um, and then they're trying to see um, the operating hours and they're having a difficult time. And they're already frustrated that it's locked, they've made the effort to go there. I think it's a good time. Um, before, we remember it was very standard that the operating hours were one set. I think we need to make um, make it, make maybe, you know how you said redundancy? That, some things I think would be um, very beneficial for redundancy, like somewhere operating hours. So then we kind of educate the community a little. Um, someplace where there's contact us. Like a lot of times, um, because I go to a lot of libraries and during COVID, um, I, I, I contacted a lot of libraries. And each library has different ways to contact them. Um, so if you go to our website, the one thing that's frustrating is the preferred method of contacting a lot of times is the phone number during... a lot of times is the phone number during operating hours. There is a contact form, too. But it's it's nice whenever I go to a webpage where there's maybe in the top left-hand corner or the bottom or something like that, very, very clearly said, Contact Us. And just do it. There's this one library, I think it's Henrietta or something, where they even put a email address for a person or something. If we don't want to put people's names, then maybe it can be the children's librarian or the adult librarian, because I tend to check out a lot of children's books. And when I saw the contact email address for, hey, I can just email the children's librarian. Then not only does my most specific question saying pull 10 books or 10, 15 books for me, it's nice that a children's librarian is getting that, and they're doing it very efficiently instead of just somebody putting it to any librarian that has time that might not be as aware of a children as a children's librarian. So I think Contact Us, my biggest thing was Contact Us, Operating Hours, and Plan Your Visit. Plan Your Visit is another way to educate, I think, the community of some of our offerings, too. Like, you know what? Hey, you can have us pull books for you. You can do a lot of different things. There's new rules and all that stuff. So a lot of things are changing. So the website is a great way to kind of kind of pull it out.
Well, I think it's good to have a Contact Us. I I would just say we could get by with contact@libraryweb or or something, or contact Penfield, something like that that would be generic and then everything.
Yes, yes, yes. More contact. Yes, I agree.
Goes in and and looks at that, because I can see not wanting to publish individual email addresses for the general public. I mean, that's that that makes sense to me. But I think that, you know, there are ways, and these are all really good suggestions. So if you have any more in the next couple of days, please email them to me. And over the weekend, I'll put them together in one document, and then we can send that to Bunny and Dave Renner. And I think that I I just think it it just appears so much better and so much more professional. And, you know, kudos to everyone who's worked on it. It's, and I think that all of our input will help make it better. Under action items, we actually have one. And that is, we actually have two. The first one is we need to approve $200 in petty cash so Gail can take the money out and keep it on hand in case somebody at the library needs petty cash for something. And we need a motion. Thank you, Megan. And Melissa, you've seconded. Thank you. All in favor, raise your hand. The other thing I had mentioned that Bunny and I are going to meet with Kathy Weber, Dick Horowitz, and Barbara Trudeau. And Neraj is going to be part of that as far as coming up with the process. And in the meantime, Dick suggested that we put any donations into the library in escrow or means putting them aside. And he thought that that would be the best thing to do. And then when we have our process, what traditionally we have done, and I don't see this changing, is that if somebody makes a donation to the library, it goes and they specify where it goes. Like, I'd like to support large print books for elderly people. Great, we can do that. But if they just say, here's a gift to the Penfield Library, at this point, that those funds go to the foundation, which is a great thing to do. But right now, until we have got our process in place for how we're going to acknowledge the gifts and exactly how that the system is, the process will work, Dick suggested we put the the money that comes in between now and when we actually get our new policy adopted in escrow. And the escrow account will be the checking account for the trustees. And Gail will have to keep a list of who donates and how much they donate, so we know that that money is in our checking account, and that money has to be accounted for and goes back out. And Neraj, who is a lawyer, is very familiar with escrow accounts and all the obligations that come with that. And I think that's why Dick had suggested that. So is there a motion?
So I I guess we want to make a motion to put future donations in a trustee checking account until the group decides what to do.
As escrow, just just for probably about two or three months.
Okay, then if we can make a motion.
Did you move that?
Yes.
Is there a second? Thanks, Judy. All in favor? Raise your hand. Thank you. And now we come to the claims payment area, which is something that is you kind of look at and say, why do we do this? But we we are, because we're charged with being responsible for the financial aspects of the library, we look over all the orders that the librarians place for different materials. And we 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 used to add them up until we discovered that you could do it just as easily and probably more accurately on Excel than any of us were able to do. So but we do have but we do have to check those off and to make sure the amounts match. And someone is the auditor for the for each month. Who is it this month? Melissa, great. So would you like? We have one person, it usually goes in alphabetical order, and the person will review all the things and then look at the total and ask us to approve the vouchers. And we will review it with you new people before you have to do it again. So it's not, you don't have to remember all of this and say, oh, my goodness. It'll it'll be fine. So Melissa, would you like to talk about the vouchers for this month?
Sure, I would like to move that we approve the vouchers in the amount of $33,688.44.
Is there a second? Rachel, seconds?
I second.
All in favor? Very good. Is there anything else that anyone would like to say? Any questions?
Don't forget to appoint the auditor for next month, Barb.
Thank you, Bunny. That's why we're all a team, because we can't remember all these things on our own. Actually, the auditor, and I, this is great, because I have everyone's name up here. So the next in alphabetically after Melissa is Megan.
I was going to say, I'm pretty sure I'm next alphabetically.
And Brett, then it'll be all you. So but you'll have a chance to watch Megan a little more. It's easier when the holidays aren't in there. Anything else that we need to do since we've appointed our auditor? Or?
Adjourn.
You have a motion for adjourn? Is there a second? Thank you, Denise. All in favor, raise your hand. And thank you all for joining us. And next month, we are going to have Adam Traub, who is the Assistant Director of the Monroe County Library System, who's going to come and talk to us about how our library interacts with the county library system. And we're also going to have one of the librarians come and talk with us. So I think we're going to have more people than me talking, which is always a good thing. Anyhow, have a great evening, and thank you very much.